Promise I'm not the committee. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dr. Hernandez. I'm one of the vice presidents in the district, and I happen to also serve on the Black Graduation Committee. The committee was looking at the work that has come forward in over the last five to 10 years and the way in which we have been able to make sure that our students feel seen, make sure that our students feel like the district is a district that is theirs, that represents them, that upholds their values, not just by saying so, but actually by being, having circumstances that are worthy of them, having circumstances that support them and uplift them, and then have graduation ceremonies that, at the end of the day, say to the entire family and community that has supported them, that you have arrived, you have made it, and we want the rest of the community to do so. Now, that doesn't happen without champions. We have three champions here today that we would like to recognize. For some of them, it's a surprise; for others, it's not. Some of them like surprises, others don't. But part of the surprise was that we know that these three ladies have spent some of their time, not just here, but on the continent, and so to make this an even more meaningful surprise, we actually had three villages in Ghana create a special dedication to the three ladies that we'll be honoring today. And so I will start with the three citations. One for Board, our former Board President, Nichelle Henderson; two for Dr. Regina Smith; and three for Dr. Tangela Alfred. So if you bear with me. Stop shaking, yes, please. So I will read out what was on the citation. It says, "The Lekbe Traditional Council presents the award of honor to Dr. Regina Smith on this day, March 17, 2025. We proudly bestow upon you the title of Sorwajo Fi Amedhi of Lekbe Duga", which means Ambassador of the Youth Development and Education, "in recognition of your outstanding contributions, dedication, and tireless efforts in promoting education, both locally and abroad. Your commitment to nurturing knowledge and fostering growth has made a profound impact on countless lives. You embody the spirit of empowerment and leadership that our community strives for. Your passion for education sets a remarkable example, inspiring future generations to reach their dreams and pursue knowledge without bandwigs." To Dr. Regina Smith. Similarly, the Lekbe Traditional Council also presented their award and honor to Nichelle Henderson on March 17 as well, as an ambassador of the youth development and education, "in recognition of your outstanding contribution, dedication, and tireless efforts in promoting education, both locally and abroad, and your commitment to nurturing knowledge and fostering growth, which has made a profound impact on countless lives." This is actually one of the places that we visited in September, so they actually remembered you. We have pictures of these actual citations that they wanted us to share with you. I didn't realize we were doing this this early, otherwise I'd have shared them so that we could see them on the board. And they wanted to share specifically that you embody the spirit of empowerment and leadership and that the communities, that the community strives for, and they look forward to seeing the rest of the things that you'll be doing. Congratulations. And last but not least, the same citation was also bestowed upon Dr. Tangela Alfred as an ambassador of youth development and education as well. The three awards, I believe Dr. Dionne Washington isn't here yet, but we will hand them over as soon as she arrives. But we just wanted, as a graduation committee, to say thank you to these three ladies for their tireless efforts on behalf of everybody in the district, to say to our community that this is something that we stand behind, that we're proud, and that we want to make sure our Black students are given what it, what they deserve during their graduation commu- graduation ceremonies, but throughout their tenure, while they're here in LACCD. So I don't know if the three ladies wanted to say something, but we just wanted to say thank you very much and congratulations to them.
I can only say wow. I am surprised. Thank you very much for this. I do what I do from my heart. Recognition is great, but I do what I do from my heart. And I, I thank Dr. Regina Smith for all of the work that she does, and Dr. Alfred for being just so dedicated to our district, to our schools, but specifically to our Black and African-American identifying students, and thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I didn't know. I just knew I was supposed to be here and make sure I'm here, so I'm here, and I'm totally shocked and happy and grateful for the acknowledgement during a period of time when we have to be very intentional with the work that we do to make sure that we are, our history stays in history, Black history, A Pita history, LGBTQIA history, women's history, Latina history. We need to make sure that it's not erased. And so this type of work that we're doing and this acknowledgement keeps us in history and memorialized, so I am blessed and I thank you.
Good afternoon. So I'm the crybaby. I literally just found out five minutes ago that I was going to be recognized. So I just want to thank the committee, thank the board. I truly love what I do.
We appreciate you.
I love what I do. I love the district. These tears are tears of joy. Thank the ancestors. Thank my colleagues. Thank the committee. I want to thank my president for being so supportive and allowing me to be able to do the work that I do. So continue doing what we do as a board, as a committee. Thank you all for the recognition, and I'm the one that doesn't like surprises, but thank you so much.
Just in time, the citations. If we could, I would hope that we'd be able to just take a picture right in front of the
Please, yeah. Please.
In true LA fashion, you get a gift bag with a customized robe and purse, I believe. So congratulations again.
Yeah, thank you.
President Eno?
Yes.
I just want to make a few comments. So first of all, I want one of those purses for me. Really quick. Everything looks gorgeous. You know, I just really want to thank former President Nichelle Henderson. You know, it takes a lot of courage to be able to stand up for our students and not, you know, look at having those international trips as something of a privilege. They're not. You know, we have the responsibility to be global. Los Angeles, we're one of the largest cities in the world, and we need to connect with the rest of the world. While some people not favor that in the federal government, we need to continue to create alliances throughout the world. This is the way, you know, the international student programs were very, very strong in the 70s. They were very strong in the 80s. And so we have to understand that this is a way that we promote our, our colleges. This is the way that we create partnerships. This is the way we, we create international student programs. And so I just really want to thank you for continuing to honor that. All, obviously, all of the people who continue to go to Uganda, to go to Africa. And by the way, we should continue to support our students if they would like to do that as well. I really think it's a very important part of being a student. I remember being at UCLA and not having the money to participate for the international program. My wealthier counterparts did, you know, and I really always wanted to. And that's why I kind of have a, you know, a still wanderlust about me, right? But at the end of the day, I really think it's important that we support our students and just really happy to see that all of you make that happen for our students. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Definitely. Great. Okay, so we will, thank you for those comments. I think we all appreciate and just really are grateful for the great work that trustee Henderson has done for her advocacy. And so, thank you. So next, we will move on to disclosures. Chancellor Ramon, can you please lead Agenda Item D1 on disclosures?
Yes, good afternoon, or President Eno, members of the board, colleagues. Let me take this item, Item D1. Prior to proceeding to vote on the matters before the Board on the agenda today, the trustees are requested to advise our staff if there are any items on the agenda for which they have received a contribution from a participant in the matter which requires disclosure and recusal under the Levine Act or another conflict of interest law. Trustees, when your name is called, please advise if you have disclosures to make on any of the items on the agenda, and if so, identify the Agenda Item number for each such item. Please note, on the state basis of the conflict, by either identifying the donor of a disqualifying campaign contribution or by providing information about another disqualifying financial interest. I will start with trustee Bueno. Do you have any? Thank you. Trustee Henderson?
No.
Trustee Hernandez?
No.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Eno?
No.
Trustee Vella?
You know what? I apologize. I forgot to, to do that. Is there a mechanism? I, I just forgot. Do we do it ourselves, or?
Yeah, if you could look through the items, we can come back to you later in the agenda.
Okay.
If that's okay, and disclose to us any items for which you may have a conflict related to the Levine Act.
Where are the items?
Why don't I give you the list in a minute?
Okay.
For you to look at, okay? And trustee Vedas?
I have no conflicts. Thank you so much.
Chancellor? Yes. Have a question. Can, or general, can we be given that information ahead of time? Like literally in this item? I mean, because even though I said no, I, I literally, I'm not sure. I'm still going to stick with no, but trustee Vella's point, to be told on the dice on this specific item, like unless you sent the email and then I apologize, but hey, on this specific item, can you please review on these items so that we have the ability, at least when the agenda is released, to know what we're being asked?
Yeah. No, and thank you very much for that, trustee Bueno. On the agenda itself, it does identify for the items whether or not they're subject to, to the Levine Act. And I think we're constantly having conversations with the board to make this, you know, as easy as possible. So when it is, when the agenda is released, if you look at the items, they will identify whether or not they're subject to the Levine Act, and then that allows you, at least as a first test, to sort of look at those to make that determination. But we're always open to suggestions to, you know.
At least for me, could you send me an email saying, hey, these items? You know, because then you're, I mean, sure, we're supposed to look at every single attachment on every single agenda, absolutely everything, but I think it would be helpful. If it's not helpful for anyone else, it would be helpful.
Thank you, trustee Bueno. I really appreciate the comments.
Is that a yes?
Well, I'm looking at the people that were actually going to be doing it. That's right.
To that, let me, if I can add further. It's a great question, trustee Bueno. The actual agenda on every item that's subject to Levine has, has it identified? We have been looking at possibly summarizing those for the trustees in, in a memo that you can receive separately so that we pull the items that are subject to Levine Act separately and then send that to you via email. I'm committing us to that. It is additional work, but I think it's necessary to ensure that we facilitate your, your ability to identify those items. So for the next Board Agenda Item, we will go ahead and commit to summarizing the items for you in a different document so that you can look at those in cross-reference, if that helps.
Yes, that helps. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Well, no, I just want, it, does it start at?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get you the summary in a minute, and then we can come back to you in a second. I, I believe we can get that to you rather quickly, but we can proceed with the agenda.
Okay, so next is Item E, Land Acknowledgement Approval for the Order of Business. The Los Angeles Community College District holds land that originally and still are inhabited by the Gabrielino Tongva Gabrielino Band of Mission Indians, Kids Nation, and the San Manuel, San Fernando, and San Fernandino Tavium Band of Mission Indians. We honor and respect their elders and descendants as they continue their stewardship on these lands and waters. Before we proceed, chancellor, are there any changes to the agenda or order of business?
No changes today, Madam President.
With that, can I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda and order of business? Moved by Hernandez.
Second.
Second by Hoffman. Roll call, please, Lupe.
Student S. Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Great. Regular Board Meeting in Closed Session. May I have a motion in second to approve the minutes for the regular Board Meeting in the closed session on March 5 and the special meeting in closed session for March 19, 2025?
So moved.
So moved by Hoffman, second by Hernandez. Any discussion, colleagues? No? Roll call, please, Lupe.
Student S. Bayham's advisory vote? Trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Item F, Reports from the Representatives of Employee Organizations. Do I have any members of the resource table who wish to be recognized at this time to make public comments before the Board?
Jeffrey Hernandez, First Rights President, District Academic Senate. I'm just going to start with the District Assistant Report towards the end. We'll hear from our president, Angela Chevetti. First off, I want to agree to the Board since your last meeting, we had a district-wide event, District Disput Day on March 14. It was attended by approximately 250 faculty and staff administrators. We had presentations on updated processes, new digital processes, as well as common numbering, curriculum alignment, and really importantly, we had a presentation on CPL where we had, we had panelists from colleges throughout the district, really inspiring folks in other disciplines to see what's happening, what's possible. And then for most of the time, we had breakouts into more than a dozen, more than two dozen discipline breakouts where they actually worked on plans for what they can put into effect in the coming years. So I thought that was important to share. But, you know, legislation is really important, and I want to also thank Maria Velos, the Government Relations Officer for the District for providing us a, a list and a request of the district's legislative priorities for 2025. And so that's going to be under consideration for Senate support in the coming, in the coming meetings, first in April, May will be when it will result in some kind of action. And also, I want to express my sincere and my deep appreciation for the trustees at the Legislative Affairs Committee and for their, their support to see something done, to fix the problems that we're dealing with with AB 1705. Really appreciate that. Thank you very much. It's, this is a work that, that we need to do, as I, as I said then, I'll say now. It's never a good idea to, to ban books or ban courses. And your recognition of, of the leadership our district has to demonstrate for our students is much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Angela Chevetti, and I'm currently serving as a president of the District Academic Senate. So I want to echo my colleague Jeff Fernandez's words. I want to thank you for being willing to help us address some of the problems with AB 1705 in particular. I just want to mention that, and I, and I spoke about this at the hearing, but we have lost about 10,000 FTS as a district since before AB 705 and 1705 was implemented. Of course, a lot of things happened during the last five years. We had the pandemic. We, at one point, we were down about 25% of our enrollment. Now, we're about 10% down. 10,000 FTS is about $60 million. That's a lot of money, and that's about the size of the hole in our budget right now. So I think it's, it's really in our best interest to look at what is going on with the implementation of this law. The successful completion of Math and English is up. We all know that. Transfer level Math and English completion is up about 8%, but what's down is transfer. Transfer is down about 8% and also successful living wage, obtaining a living wage is also down significantly, about 38%. So if the goal is to transfer students, if the goal is to get students enrolled, then this is not working. So we need to address what is not working in the implementation of this legislation. I also want to talk a little bit about the DS Task Force on Artificial Intelligence. So we have formed a task force. They met last week, and their charge is develop recommendations related to board policies, administrative procedures, use policies, and best practices surrounding AI. In the student survey that was administered in the fall of 2024, I want to quote a couple of, because there were several questions related to AI. 64% of our students stated agreed or strongly agreed that the development and use of AI will positively impact my education. 64%. That's almost two-thirds of our students. 55% of our students said that AI is important, is an important tool for the career I am seeking. AI is here. We are not ready for it. No one is ready for it, but we need to get ready. So we will be making recommendations to the Board on language for board policy and administrative procedures, survey data. We are going to be collaborating hopefully with outside agencies looking at job training, but this is here, and I think it has to be a priority for all of us to address. Finally, I want to talk a little bit about what's happening at, at the national level. We are living in very troubling times. Students are being picked up on college campuses or wrong campuses. They're being detained without due process. People are being deported in error without any due process, and the free press is under attack. Academic freedom is under attack. You've probably heard about what happened at a number of colleges where they were pressured to get rid of certain programs. This is why it's so important that we support our students. We support free speech during these times. We support student newspapers in particular. So we've all heard about, you know, some of the concerns about our student newspapers. Let's please set the example here because we are really, really living in scary times. And it's up to us, I think, to show a better way as educators. So I want to support the city faculty in particular and their concerns and the students about their newspaper. A free press is essential for the survival of democracy. And we are at a point in history where it's really in question whether we will have a democracy in the near future. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. I want to take a moment to recognize that April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. It's also Autism Awareness Month, Arab American Heritage Month, and Child Abuse Prevention Month. Yesterday, Cory Booker beat Strom Thurmond's, Strom Thurmond, excuse me, the racist segregationist record by having a 24-hour and 18-minute filibuster on the Senate floor. I don't, well, I don't want you to worry. I'm not going to try to beat that right now. All right, maybe in the future. Booker recognized the significance of this moment, stating, "Maybe my ego got caught up that maybe, maybe just maybe, I could break this record of the man who tried to stop the rights upon which I stand. I am not here, though, because of his speech. I am here despite his speech." Booker also took us back to the civil rights movement by saying, "Let's get into some good trouble." Recently, I received the CFT's Dean Murakami Race and Social Justice Award, and I stated, "Don't invoke the words of Martin Luther King if you're not willing to get in some good trouble." This is our civil rights movement. We must be willing to get into good trouble. We must defend free speech rights, whether or not we agree with the speaker. We must protect academic freedom. We must protect the rights of workers and unions. We must defend our immigrant students, LGBTQIA+ students, students of color, women, faculty, unions, and staff. We must be brave and stand up for what is right. We must protect what King called "beloved community." I want to recognize that members of this Board and the Legislative Affairs Committee are standing up for our beloved community right now, willing to get in good trouble in your unwavering support of AB 170, fixing AB 1705. When AB 1705 and 705 were first presented as supporting student success, particularly for students of color, we were a little fooled. We recognize that the majority of legislators who voted yes on this bill had no ill intent, but did not understand its full ramifications. Most of our non-traditional students have not taken English and math courses in years. Some of our students are re, are re-entry students who, after spending years to decades incarcerated, are trying to turn their lives around. Some students did not do well in their high school math and English courses, but still want an opportunity to pursue their college dreams. For some students, English is not their first language. AB 1705 slammed the door on many of these students, forcing them into college-level English and math courses that they were unprepared for. Thank you, the Board. I want to thank the Board members for pushing for reform of AB 1705 and demanding first-day data from the district, not just throughput. I want to thank many of our faculty members who have been at the forefront of this fight to fix AB 1705 and protect our students' access to college education. Some of them are here today and will speak later. I also want to thank the chancellor, the deputy chancellor, and HR for moving more quickly to resolve some of, many of the outstanding issues that we have had. While it is improved, we still need to work on ensuring that the district adheres to agreed timelines, ensures that retaliation is unacceptable, and respects our contract. We do not have to be constantly adversarial. In Germany, unions are viewed as a vital part of the social partnership system. They understand that a happy and respected workforce is a more productive workforce. I know many of you in this room understand this as well. Our contract is an agreement between management and the workers. Your job is to enforce the contract, and our job is to ensure that the contract is followed, regardless of who the member is or what the offense is. Could you imagine all we could accomplish if we had this social partnership? Our union will always be ready to engage in some good trouble. We hope that more of that good trouble could be focused on those outside forces trying to restrict public education to our students and less on internal issues. To paraphrase Cory Booker, "We're not here because of Donald Trump, but in spite of Trump. We must work together to get into good trouble, to resist the Trump agenda, and protect our students, faculty, and staff." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the resource table?
Anyone else from the resource table?
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Chancellor. My name is Kristin Ozan. I represent SCA Loca ninety-nine. I just want to just briefly to say today that, you know, our members are really disappointed that this board has decided to approve to discipline our members based on an attendance policy that's not valid, and it's not even district policy, nor is it contractual. And, you know, we just having a hard time with this because, you know, I reached out to you, trustee Kelsey, and Dr. Ramon, and showed you where it is a violation according to the state law. And I just don't understand why our members are still being disciplined based on this policy. And, you know, there's a lot of factors, you know. People want to say that, you know, quote-unquote, Loca ninety-nine has the worst attendance. Well, you can't really say that if, first of all, if we're the only ones that's clocking in and out to work, and we're dealing with other issues, you know, as far as hostile work environment, short staffing, you know, our jobs are very physical. So, you know, when you're working and you're doing triples and doubles, of course, you know, your body is going to break down. You're going to get sick. You're going to take days off. That's, that's just the way it is. But more importantly, if you have sick time on the books, if you have sick time, personal necessity time, we are entitled to take that time. That is part of our benefits. So, I mean, I, I just really feel that it's unfair that our members are, again, being disciplined, suspended, whatnot, for using their own time and based on, again, a policy that's not even valid. And, you know, we're just asking a cease and desist, you know, with this attendance policy. And, I mean, if we have to take it further, if we have to take legal actions on this, then we will, you know, but it needs to stop. It needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? No representative. Okay. Thank you, everyone. I'm going to go back to item D, disclosures, for Chancellor.
Thank you. We'll come back to trustee Vella. Can you please advise if you have any disclosures to make on the items on the agenda? And if so, identify the agenda item number for each such item.
I have no conflict.
Thank you so much.
Great. So now we're going to get reports from the board, item G. So trustee Vella, can you please summarize the proceedings of the Legislative and Public Affairs Committee that you chaired on March nineteenth?
Can you give me a moment?
Yeah, I would just say also, thank you so much for the work. Like everyone is saying, there's been some really great things progressing through Legislative and Public Affairs. I'll come back to you and, oh, you have like, yeah, three in a row. So I'm going to, I'll go to trustee Hoffman for now then. Please summarize the proceedings of the Budget and Finance Committee that you chaired on March nineteenth.
Thank you, Chair Eno. Actually, I don't have much to report. We were going to take a look at our five-year projections, but then the Budget and Finance Committee was made aware that the college presidents and the chancellor were going to meet to talk about some enrollment strategies and talk about their budget projections. And so we agreed to table the item until April sixteenth, which is when our next Budget and Finance Committee meeting will be meeting. Thank you.
Sure. So I will go next. On March twenty-fifth, the APITA, which is the Asian Pacific Odyssey American Plus Student Affairs Committee Advisory Committee to the Chancellor, had met. We had a really packed agenda. We had heard from our students. We also heard from our Vice Chancellor, Maury Pearl, about the demographic data and how the API community data has kind of shifted down a little bit, but we're going to try to find, identify reasons to that, to hopefully build up that population back. We also got a really great presentation from the Foundations and Futures from UCLA, who are working on an API textbook, online textbook, which is really good, and it's free. So for faculty, staff, students, community members that want to use this as a resource guide, they can. We also had a presentation from one of our colleagues at one of the colleges on a scholarship for our Pacifica students, Native Hawaiian Pacifica students. Harbor College is the one program that we currently have, our A-PAS program that does support this population. So they gave us an update. As well as, please, everyone save the date, which is May third, from, I think it's nine to one PM, hosted at Harbor College. This year, instead of just an APITA celebration of graduation, we're holding a summit. And really what the work is, is to really identify the needs of this particular population and to cultivate meaningful programming. Student clubs, like West LA just started their student club, you know, Harbor College has always had an A-PAS program that supports this population. So we're really hoping to look to identify the needs and develop additional clubs and programming to support the population. And a huge thanks to the chancellor and the board colleagues for really always advocating for this population also. Another update is that APAH, which is the Asian Pacific American in Higher Ed Conference, is going to be on during our spring break again. But if any folks are planning to go, please connect with me, because I also intend to go. It'll be this year in Oakland. And then we are collecting all of the links and all of the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month activities from all of the colleges here. So we'll work on putting together documents to be able to distribute to the entire campus. But thank you so much, Chancellor, for holding the space and letting us explore the needs of our students. So with that, I will go back to trustee Hernandez. So trustee Hernandez, can you please summarize the proceedings of the Facility's Master Planning and Oversight Committee that you chaired on March nineteenth?
At our, at our meeting, we discussed the Build LACC D Local Small Emerging and Disabled Veteran Program. The district has done really well at meeting the benchmarks, and we discussed how we can refine those benchmarks and continue to evolve the program. We also got a project status update on the ELAC Southeast Campus and the plans to rehabilitate those buildings and that campus in the future. Our next meeting will be April sixteenth at April sixteenth.
Thank you. Trustee Vella, can you please summarize the proceedings of the Legislative and Public Affairs Committee that you chaired on March nineteenth, as well as the Basic Needs Ad Hoc Committee that you chaired on March twenty-first?
Yeah, so regarding our federal update, as all of you are probably aware of, there was heavy discussion on the Department of Education, its impact basically on our Pell Grant system. Also, we had, you know, kind of a very robust discussion on how some of the potential dollars, federal dollars, up to about twenty-nine million dollars, could be also an impact to the district. And then obviously, you know, just talking about how the Department of Education would dismantle with or without Congress. There was also talk about, I believe it was the kind of budget at that time, they were going through a federal, a potential federal shutdown of the government. But we were able to, at least for now, continue to have communications with the administration, continue to have communications through our advocates in order to keep the funding coming so far. And I think, Chancellor, you're aware of the, of the potential impacts as well. We are drafting some type of fact sheet that could be, and I don't know, President Eno, if you would like to, I know you asked for the fact sheet of what the federal impacts could be.
Yes.
So if maybe we want to post that on the website in the future, I completely leave that up to you. At the state level, we did have a little bit of a silver lining. There is a little bit of a potential budget surplus. However, the type of funding that we get is tied, obviously, to Proposition ninety-eight, and so right now we're just trying to protect that part of it. We do have very, again, strong relationships with the governor's office, strong relationships with the state legislature, both in the Assembly and Senate side. So we are continuing to protect our portion of our budget so that we have no impact at the state, at least for our budget. We did have some good news. We were able to talk to Metro about continuing our Metro Go Pass program. That's the free pass for our students that allow them to use the metro system. And so we continue to have an Assembly member, Jose Solot, just carrying that bill for us. We also have, at the local level, had a big victory where, at the Board of Supervisors, we were able to save the Peer Navigator Program. If many of you are aware, this program allows for students to be able to find resources for their housing insecurity as well as other services. So I really want to thank President Eno, Chancellor Román, our advocates, Mercury Public Affairs, Santa Maria, and, you know, to continue to work with Metro, work with the county. So lots and lots of stuff. And I haven't even touched the bills that were sponsoring or anything like that. I do want to say that the discussions on AB seventeen oh five and seven oh five were very, very fruitful. And I think part of what made it fruitful is that we had the Academic Senate. We also had our negotiating units present at that Legislative and Public Affairs Committee. And I think there was a real sense of communication, and we were able to really understand that there isn't, for example, data being collected from what I kind of made up a term, which is like our drop-off students. These are students that really, we don't know why they left the system. We don't know if they didn't pass English, or they didn't pass math, or, you know, have these barriers due to, as Nisetha Vary mentioned, seventeen oh five seventy-five. So I think what we're, we're going to continue to do is, is have these conversations around, you know, where we can, at least short-term, the district can provide some relief, and then I think long-term, how we can work with our legislators. Because I do believe that there is a good in the legislators. They, they should and will understand it. But I do think that we need to continue to have these conversations again. So again, thank you all so much. With the Basic Needs Committee, we actually had a very successful committee. What we did talk about was the current success of the current program for interim housing. We were able to talk about an RFQ that is out. I'm not sure if the RFQ is still out. It is not. Okay, so it's done. But this has been a very successful pilot program. Again, I want to thank the trustees for it. And then we were able to kind of hone in on future agenda items. That was like the bulk of that committee's. And I want to thank Dr. Nicole Lopez for her leadership and putting that meeting together. So thank you all.
Thank you. Just a lot of appreciation to you, trustee Vella. During this time, I think it's very critical that our Legislative and Public Affairs Committee stay up to date. And with you and the chancellor and Maria Velos, I think we are well-supported for the district. And thank you to all of the lobbyists also that have been really taking action, and all of us. I think everyone's really trying to stay abreast of all of the things that are happening on a daily, and it's quite overwhelming. Okay, so the next item is two, two, two G, the twenty-twenty-five California Community College Trustee Board of Directors Elections. So we do, there are four seats up for election to the CCT Board with three incumbents running. And so I did kind of defer to trustee Hoffman and trustee Henderson, because I think they're most involved in these spaces and places. And so do, do we just? May I have a motion and a second on item G two, or do we have to narrow it down to the four? Sorry.
So I move to approve, but I was a little confused because I thought there were seven seat, I thought we were voting for seven, but there were three incumbents. Do you know the, is that right? Okay, so we, we're able to vote for seven, we're able to vote for seven candidates? Is that the case? Or are we voting for four candidates?
Seven.
Are we voting for seven total? Okay. I'm just a little confused because it says, this year there are four seats up for election to the Triple CT Board with three incumbents running. So is that four seats with three incumbents, meaning there's one open seat? Can we get some clarification on that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay.
I believe if I read this correctly, are four seats total, and there's three incumbents running in those four seats. Trustee Hoffman.
Okay, so then I would move to approve the three incumbents. I'm working with them currently. That's Jose Akala from Riverside Community College District, Inez De Luna from Napa Valley Community College District, and Tammy Silver, who most of us know from the Pasadena Community College District. Tammy Silver is actually in line to be the second vice president, and so I would, you know, move to make sure that she gets back on that board. And then for the open seat, my nomination would be for Udoak Joe from Long Beach.
Yes.
I've been encouraging him to run, and so this time I see his name on the list and very excited to support him.
That would be my motion.
I can second that motion. Was there any discussion? Oh, sorry.
No, yeah, any discussion from folks on recommendations? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Lupe, can I please have a roll call?
Student trustee Beham's advisory vote? Thank you. Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? I'm sorry, was that a no?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Vedas. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So next is item G three, the Board Travel Ratification Authorization. Can I have a motion and a second for item G three? Some of moved by Hernandez, second by trustee Vella. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Lupe.
Student trustee Beham's advisory vote? Trustee Bona? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas. Thank you.
Item G four is absence ratification authorization. May I have a motion and a second on the item G four?
So move.
Second. Moved by Vella, second by Hernandez. Any discussion? Great. Roll call, please, Lupe.
Student trustee Beham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Vedas.
I'm sorry, clarification. So first time I'm seeing hardship, what does that mean?
It's, yeah.
Just for the future, because I know sometimes when you miss meeting, you get doctor Dave, but this is the first time I'm seeing that illness, hardship. So I was just curious.
I need just a moment to review the board role.
Thank you.
Trustee Vedas, is that subject to your motion, or do you want further clarification and pass the motion?
Oh, no.
No, I, I'm just, I'm struggling with definitions because it's a hardship.
So let's get you an answer before.
Some of us who take vacation time to be here, it is a hardship, but we decide to be here and do this, but I just wanted to understand illness, all those conflicts, all those things, and it's the first time in fifteen years I've noticed hardship.
Understood. So we'll hold on to vote then pending clarification.
Should we table it and move on for now?
We we can just table it, and we'll just bring it back when we are able to respond to the question.
I think, yeah, that'll be good. And just in general, I guess, have a grid for the future for us. Okay, so the next is the resolutions. Item H one, in observance of Denim Day, is Wednesday, April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, and Sexual Assault Awareness Month. May I have a motion and a second on item H one?
Move to approve.
Moved by Hoffman, second by Hernandez. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Lupe.
Student trustee Beham's advisory vote? Trustee Bona? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yeah.
Trustee Vedas.
And item H two, in observance of Child Abuse Prevention Month. May I have a motion and a second on item H two? Second, a motion by Hernandez?
Second.
Second by trustee Vella. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Lupe.
Student trustee Beham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas.
Yes.
Yes, to celebrate the month of the young child, may I have a motion and a second on item H three?
Move to approve.
Moved by Hoffman. Moved by Hoffman, second by Hernandez. Any discussion?
Actually, I do have discussions. I think, you know, we have our preschools and childcare centers on all of our campuses. And we're here celebrating the month of the young child and we're presenting a resolution. I would like to know, you don't have to answer me at this moment, but if you can just maybe email the board, like, what are we doing? Do we do anything to celebrate? Are we, you know, doing something at our childcare, child development centers? Are we doing something with our students who are in the child development program? I mean, I really feel, and I know we've had this conversation before, and you and I have had debates about this. Trustee Vera, is that we pass all these resolutions, but what action are we actually taking when we pass a resolution? I don't think we should just pass resolutions to pass resolutions. And in that same vein. There's a bill that's coming through the state legislature authored by Jesse Gabriel. About the additives and like the GMO and the way the food is produced for the school lunch program. And trustee Vela, I would love if you would take that up at your Legislative and Public Affairs Committee, because he actually reached out to me asking if LACC D. Would support that bill. And it, it has specific, it specifically deals with young children and the school meals program in the state of California. And if we are truly celebrating the month of the young child and child abuse prevention month, we should. Be very concerned and care about what's going into the bodies of our youngest, littlest learners, because they will be our future. And so. Thank you so much. I'm glad we're having, we have this on the board agenda. But again, I would like to make sure that we're taking action around our resolutions.
Thank you for that. Trustee Bayham?
Yeah, I actually had a question about that. I know I didn't get a chance to talk about the SAC meeting because unfortunately we didn't make form. A few of our members are, were away at the Washington trip to do lobbying. So. This was actually brought up. We were able to have a very casual conversation with the board members that were able to make it. But a lot of the childcare facilities on campus are not open to the after hour students. So we were looking to see if there was something that we can do in order to extend those hours for after hour students. You know, go to work during the day and then have night classes.
Can I say something really quick? I think it's a really good point. If we can, trust that Chancellor Roman kind of see if Maria Velos can. Engage that conversation with the workforce bill that we're trying to put together so that it has an emphasis on childcare. And maybe we can fund after we're, you know, after. The, the courses that, that our mothers are taking or any student that has children. So that we can use some funding to be able to keep these open later. I can tell you that, you know, I'm very familiar with the East LA College, you know, childcare. Their training program and, you know, as when I worked for the county, we used to really support it and, you know. Have a lot of the students come out and, and become childcare providers. I remember, you know, licensing them to the state and so on and so forth. So we do, I think this is a workforce issue that can be kind of blended in. To our current ask in Sacramento, so if we could have that conversation, thank you.
Very good. Can I just add one more thing? I'm so sorry.
No, no.
I'm really happy that we're having this dialogue and this conversation, you know, as we look at the careers. That we provide and that we're training our students for in the building trades, the building and construction trades. I was just at a conference this past weekend and one of the biggest challenges. When a student decides that they want to go into a pre-apprentice or an apprenticeship program or journey program. And, and part of the trades is childcare, because oftentimes. If women go into these jobs, they're looking at very non-traditional hours. And so childcare is a big barrier. To having a, a full career. And then, as we know, those are very good union jobs. And so I think this is really great that we're having this conversation and discussion. Thank you.
No, great. Any other discussion? Okay, with no further discussion, can I get a roll call, please Lupe?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Item H four, celebrating National Arab American Heritage Month. Can I get a motion and a second for item H four? Still moved. By Vela, second by Hoffman. Any discussion? A roll call, please Lupe.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Yes.
Great. Item H five, celebrating National Community College Month. May I have a motion and a second for item H five? So moved. So moved by Hoffman. I will second by Ino. Any discussion?
Can I say something? As member of the Consultation Council, which is the group of constituents that meet before the Board of Governors meetings. I was invited to participate in the Board of Governors Advocacy Day yesterday in Sacramento. And they do something really cool. They honor every legislator or legislative staff member. That is an alumni of a community college. And so we had lunch out by the Capitol steps and really got to hear their stories. And it's just, it's a really fun. Really fun event. And then in the evening, they had the legislative, the Board of Governors Legislative Champion Awards. And Mike Fong, our own Mike Fong was honored along with Senator Steve Bradford. And they participated in a panel discussion, but I think it's really great. Because I remember when I first started working at a community college in nineteen ninety seven, like. Legislature barely paid attention to us. And so the fact that we're honoring, you know, members of the legislature that. Came and graduated, transferred, took some classes at a community college, I think, I think is really wonderful. And the more they know about like what we do, the more they'll be supportive. And the more information they'll have when bills like AB seven oh five and seventeen oh five come to them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just looking at the resolution, I also want to add a comment to say. I think for myself, attending a community college was probably the best decision ever. It also allows me to be here in front of you all in this seat today. I think had I not taken this path in life. I wouldn't have a career as a counselor, which I love. I wouldn't be able to give back the way that I can. And I think attending a community college was definitely for me the best decision that I could have made for myself. So. I agree with this resolution wholeheartedly. Any other comments? No, a roll, a roll call, please Lupe.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Yes.
Great. Item H six, recognizing National Administrative Professionals Week, April twentieth through twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. And National Administrative Professionals Day, April twenty third, twenty twenty five. May I have a motion and a second? So, oh, second. Moved by trustee Hernandez, second by trustee Hoffman. Any discussion? A huge, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you to Lupe and Crystal.
Right?
Yes. And all of you. Every administrative professional, thank you so much for what you do. Make sure you thank them.
All apologize and thank them. Right? Because they deal with all the stuff. Okay, and any further discussion? No? Roll call, please.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Oh, yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, so item seven is celebrating Earth Day, April twentieth, twenty second, twenty twenty five. And reaffirming the Los Angeles Community College District's Clean Energy and Sustainability Goals. Can I have a motion and a second? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hernandez, second by trustee Vela. Any discussion? I know we have a presentation from West LA coming too, so that'll be really good. Any other discussion? No, okay. Roll call, please Lupe.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yeah.
Trustee Veras.
Okay, great. Item H eight, commemorating the Day of Remembrance for Armenian Genocide and Genocide Remembrance Day. I'll second. Motion by trustee Vela, second by trustee Hoffman. Any discussion?
Can you, can, is that a day off for us in LACC D? In Glendale, it's a holiday. And are we, it's not a floating holiday, it's an actual day off. Okay, I just. I didn't know where we landed on that, so very grateful. Thank you. It's important.
Roll call, please Lupe.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Okay, so I am going back to item J. G four. The absence. G four.
Uh, G four, this is the absence ratification authorization. We did review the board rule. Thank you. General Counsel Prieto, Deputy Chancellor Abal Lopez. The board rule is very general to stipulate that hardship. States if the board finds that the absence was due to hardship deemed acceptable. So it's general enough and applicable. It's not specific to certain situations. So as it stands now, that's the way it reads. And so I. Encourage you to take action based on the current existing language.
Great. I think you did have five affirmative votes plus trustee Bayham's. So. I think we're, we're good. It was just.
Let the report trustee Veras as absent.
Right, okay, I'll take him on. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along. Is the chancellor's report.
Yes, thank you so much, Board President Ino, members of the board, colleagues. Again, I want to thank you first and foremost for passing all these resolutions. Your continuing recognition of the various causes, principles, values for which this district stands for is truly commendable. And I. Thank you for your leadership. Let's go to slide number two, please. Here's what I want to do, provide you a brief, very brief enrollment update. I'll follow that up with. Talking a little bit about the very successful language summit that we held on March twenty seventh. Some information related to our upcoming Business Expo. We're excited about having our second annual Business Expo. I'll tell you more about that in a minute. And of course. I want to give you an update on the housing initiative. We have some RFPs that are actually out, some that have closed. So I want to make sure the board is aware of our current RFP process that relates to our housing initiative. And as has been stated, we'll close out with a wonderful presentation from West LA College and their Climate Center. So. We'll leave the best to last. So thank you. West LA for being here today with us. All right, so let's talk about enrollment here for spring. Let me give you some general updates. Our head count's about the same from last year. We're at a hundred percent. You'll see a two percent increase on actual enrollment compared to last year. Our section counts roughly the same. I do anticipate that these numbers will go up somewhat based upon the upcoming eight week courses that are slated to begin. Later in the month. So enrollment upward. We've not dropped below a hundred percent, and we do anticipate a little bit of growth. In the next couple of weeks as our eight week courses start. Let's go ahead and go on to the next slide, please. You'll see there are some increases, mostly in all categories related to ethnicity. We do have a drop in white students, but I suspect the majority of that has to do with bot and enrollments that we had last year. Those have been mainly cleaned up, and so you'll see a difference. And I suspect that this number is a lot more accurate in terms of our actual. Student population for, again, for white students. There is a bit of a drop in the thirty five years and older category returning students. We're looking at that very carefully. We're hoping. This is not a trend, but we'll continue to monitor. You'll see an increase in continuing students, which is great. We're having more students persist and continue. And also concurrent high school students. Again, our dual enrollment numbers are continuing on the upward trend, which is really good. And again, kudos to the colleges. We're doing their outreach, working very closely with our LEUSD partners. This is one of the pillars where we see and continue to see enrollment growth. So again, very excited to know that dual enrollment and concurrent. High school enrollment is up. Also up is, as I've said before, our non-credit numbers. You'll see that our head count's up seven percent for non-credit. Ten percent for enrollment. So that's a really good sign that more and more students are opting to go the non-credit route. Why is this important? This is a way for us to get our students, particularly our older students into the system, taking non-credit courses. Transitioning to credit programs and ultimately transferring. So. We're excited to do that as well as just providing general access to many of our community members who are looking. For non-credit courses. So again, kudos to the colleges. Thank you so much for making non-credit a focus. And then lastly, you'll see the modality there, forty eight percent remote. Forty four percent in person and about eight percent hybrid. So that's remained the same throughout, I would say, the last couple of years. There are students who opt for online education. It's primarily an access issue for them. Many of them are clearly working full time and do not have the privilege to be able to come. In person. So having options for students both in person and online is actually an access issue for us. We'll continue to monitor modality. For, for now, it's about fifty fifty as we've seen. It's remained the same for the last, I would say, the last three to four years. All right, let's go ahead and go on to the next slide. Next one, please. State and Language Education Summit. Again, I want to thank the trustees for pushing for this initiative on in language education. We had an excellent summit that took place on the twenty seventh. About a hundred and ninety attendees joined us. And I want to thank, of course, first and foremost, all of the trustees. For putting forward in language education, our Legislative Committee, many of you were part of it or have supported the work there. Assemblymember Fong spilled AB ten ninety six, which actually allowed us to expand in language education. And a special shout out to trustee Bona. Thank you for your vision and leadership, bringing forward this initiative. Of in language education. We say it started as a concept. It went then to legislation, then to non-credit courses, and now. For the first time at LACC D, we have a full in language credit program, which was highlighted at the summit. So. Thank you again, trustees, trustee Bona, for your leadership there. And we had keynote speakers. We had Dr. Antonio Flores from Haku. Who was there to lend his support, but also to talk about how this particular concept of in language education could actually lead. To some national level activities. Also with us was Dr. Linda Vazquez. She's the Associate Vice Chancellor for the State Chancellor's Office. Who also presented her support and the state chancellor's support for in language education. And I'd be remiss if I didn't actually give kudos to our faculty who presented. We had ELAC Senate President Letizia Barajas who was there. That's right. And Vice President Armando Andrade. They had a wonderful presentation again on the launch of the credit program at ELAC related to the Child, Family and Education Studies. And they presented on a, I think it's a toolkit that they're presenting to the district academic senate as well. To try to replicate those efforts that we have at ELAC at other colleges. And last but not least, our district academic senate, thank you. President Echeverry, Vice President Hernandez for being there and lending your support. I know this is a movement that's growing. We had about ten thousand enrollments so far in, in the in language courses, and we suspect that this will continue to grow. As an initiative of the college and fundamentally providing more opportunities. In language for diverse populations that we represent here at the LACC D district. So again, thank you. Wonderful event. We have a couple of more online, and then we're launching our actual in-person summit, looking at September sixteen as a tentative date. To have our in-person summit. So again, thank you so much. We appreciate the great work and looking forward to our next meeting. Going on to our next slide, please. So this is a, one of my babies, I'll say. We started this last year at ELAC. It's the Sisterhood Expo. And this was a wonderful opportunity for us. To showcase some of our small, a small business owned businesses in the community. Last year, we had it at ELAC. We had about forty five vendors that actually showed up, showcased their business. And we had quite a few people attend to support our small businesses, particularly those that are women owned. So we decided. Board President Ino to make this a district-wide event. So this will be the next one we're doing on, actually, April seventeenth, excuse me. This will be at East LA College, ten to three. Again, the idea is to have our local, small. Business, women-owned businesses come out, be showcased at this event. There's also a support cost, donations that will be collected will go towards LA Strong Disaster Response Fund, the ELAC Women's Center. As well as a forever home campaign. So come out, show support for our women-owned businesses. Locally, again, it's a district-wide event. We're inviting businesses throughout LACC D to join us. And it will be from ten to three, food, entertainment, and of course, more importantly, supporting our local businesses. So. Looking forward to the event, and I hope you can join us on the seventeenth. And then lastly, let me give you a quick update on what's going on with our. Housing initiative. So we're taking significant steps, again, to move us forward towards addressing housing insecurity. I want to thank trustee Hernandez. Thank you so much for leading the efforts and really the entire board. I know that. In addition to the leadership of trustee Hernandez, we had a bond that took a lot of effort from all of us to get it passed, all of you here. Without, I will get in trouble if I start naming you individually, but all of you were incredibly supportive. Of getting the bond passed. Trustee Hernandez has continued the efforts to get us to a place where we're now have tangible results. And let me tell you where we are with the RFP. So. We have a couple that are going on. We did, as was stated earlier, the short-term emergency housing. RFQ has closed, that closed on March the twenty first. This is two. This is to establish a new bench for uh, nonprofit and other organizations to be able to provide intermittent housing for our students. You know, we've had a very good partnership with uh, some of our nonprofits, Shower of Hope, LA Room and Board, uh, Holman is another. So this is the renewal of that RFP, the renewal of the bench for us to have some housing opportunities there. And so again, we're now reviewing proposals and we will bring to the board probably around June, the new uh, contracts for a bench for the intermittent housing. We also have the other delivery of housing to LACC D students. This one has three components. Uh, it is closing on April the thirtieth. And uh, included with that are pre-qualifying meetings. You are to attend either the April eighth or the fourteen, uh, to be able to qualify for uh, applying for this RFP. The information will go out this week. I want to thank Build and our, our team for making sure that uh, we get the word out. Folks do need to attend one of these meetings. You don't have to attend both, but make sure you go to one. This includes uh, bidding on existing properties, includes bidding on um, buildings under construction. It includes bidding on vacant properties. And again, it's a pretty um, extensive but full-on uh, RFP with a lot of great ideas that we're hoping come forward in terms of how we can find solutions for student housing. So uh, looking forward to having that closed at the end of this month. And then of course, going forward with the review, um, the interviews and then bringing those to the board, hopefully by June at the latest. The, the next one that I'm excited about is, I'm sorry, if you could go back one more, Lupe. Uh, this will be the short-term and emergency. I'm sorry, this is the building on a college campus. Uh, so you know, that's our third option. We're looking at possibly building at one of our colleges. We are putting out that RFP very soon, trustee Hernandez, I promise. Uh, it's coming out and uh, we are uh, in conversations with the build team, with our team about uh, land that we have at the various colleges to actually build on campus. That's exciting. Uh, we're getting ready, uh, working with the team here. I see Peggy's here and others uh, to get that actual proposal out. But as you can see, we're looking at three options. One is to acquire property. The other is to build on one of our colleges. And the third is actually the intermittent housing. Uh, that one already closed. So a lot happening, trustees. Again, thank you so much for continuing to all of your efforts to support student housing. I'm very optimistic about the work ahead and the tangible uh, actual results that we'll have in the next few months, uh, considering all the work uh, that we're doing now. So again, thank you and thank you trustee Hernandez for continuing to lead the efforts. I appreciate it.
I just want to quickly thank the chancellor as well for being so, for helping us drive this um, as well as the uh, facilities staff, Dr. Sada. I know he's not here today, but he has been so great at helping us propel this forward, as well as the LACC D build team and our consultants, Beacon Rose. They've been really great. This is a prickly an effort, but we're, I think we're on the right path.
Yeah, I, I really wanted to, again, thank staff because you know, from the emergency housing uh, RFQ, RFP that went out, that closed in March, to the future one, which is a building on a college campus. This is real tangible results. And I know last year, we had our students here that came to us and demanded that we act. And so the thing with housing, though, it's not very fast, right? And so we're working also in the legislative committee to be able to fast-track any issues, any type of barriers. So I just want all of us to at least spread the word. Uh, there's going to obviously be um, some uh, you know, major kind of, you know, I believe policies also statewide that's going to complement all of this. So you know, I really just wanted to thank uh, staff this time and uh, ensure that, you know, at least to the trustees, thank you all so much for supporting these efforts because we are listening to our students. So thanks.
Chancellor.
Like the, I, I want to thank the leadership of, of trustee Hernandez. Um, and I know trustee Vela is, is right there, doing something right there. Um, and, and our president for, I mean, moving this forward significantly is real tangible. And, and, and thank you and your, and your leadership, uh, chancellor as well. But to, and, and, and staff, it's, it's a big deal. It's a huge step for almost uh, five to seven years of advocating uh, for this. And now to see it moving forward. Um, you guys seem to have a great team. Thank you.
And, and I want to say that, you know, Dr. Sata's not here, but he really took this. I know Peggy, you also took care of it um, during, you know, the time that we uh, didn't have Dr. Smith with us. So again, um, but I, I just want to say, cause I, I think we don't give enough credit to trustee Hernandez. Um, trustee Hernandez, seriously, like, you really took this and ran with it. And I know that when I left the FIPAC committee last year and I think today, you know, having, chairing the basic needs. I know, I didn't know how much work you all had done there to get it to FIPAC. And now we have a, I think, a good FIPAC team. But again, you know, I want to give a round of applause to trustee Hernandez again. He really did. Take it to where it needed to be, you know, and, and have that, that uh, you know, I believe the, what is it, gum for the uh, I forget what that word is, but. Hupsba, whatever. Um, yeah. Thank you.
Ghana. Oh, oh.
Uh, one last item. Again, thank you, uh, trustees for that. Um, we're excited. Actually, I'm going to call uh, President Limbaugh. We're excited to showcase uh, West LA's Climate Center. You may know that, uh, again, thanks to the trustees and their advocacy efforts, we did receive funding uh, to fund the climate center. And I have to say, uh, President Limbaugh, your faculty, your staff, your leadership have done amazing work. So much so that the state chancellor's office has recognized the climate center as the state chancellor's California Center for Climate Education. So we're excited to hear your presentation. I'm going to turn the floor over to you and get us started. Tell us about the climate center at West LA College.
Uh, thank you Chancellor Ramon, um, president Eno, members of the board of trustees. We're very glad to provide you a two-year update on the California Center for Climate Change Education, which is an initiative of the Los Angeles Community College District and it's housed at West Los Angeles College. To set a tone for this, I did want to let you know that in two thousand and twenty-four, Yale University, through its Climate Connections Initiative, identified that climate center as a significant achievement in education and climate change. And we were the only institution in the country to be so designated. And also, before going any farther, I'd like to recognize all the good folks here in the blue shirts. These are the, are many of our student leaders, our, our employees who are making the, the center be what it is. So with that, I'd like to bring to the, to the podium, Dr. Jo Tavadas-Rager, a climate scientist herself, who is also the director of the center. Jo.
Hello. Thank you so much. Thank you, President Limbaugh, and thank you all for having us here. It's a real honor. Uh, our center was established through the passage of AB nineteen thirteen, and that's also where our mandate comes from. And if you study that legislation, you can see that our purposes fall into these three categories: climate education, workforce development, and community outreach. We've done so much in the last twenty-four months that there is no way we can cover everything in a ten-minute presentation. So I'm going to try to give you a broad overview and I'm happy to discuss the details with you all later, if that's something that you would like to do. So we'll start with education. And so we have a number of programs at West LA College. I want to highlight here the Climate Change and Environmental Studies, which is a unique AA that we are now working to articulate in uh, to, for your institutions. Uh, we have developed a number of certificates, including non-credit certificates for the reasons that we've already heard about the importance of having these gateway programs. Uh, and then I want to highlight our integrated approach, specifically the climate across the curriculum program, which is a framework that we developed at West LA College. And that's the cool thing about working at West LA College is that we can sandbox things there, right? We can test, we can experiment, and then create these models that can be used by other colleges. And that's what we are seeing in their recognition from the state chancellor's office. Uh, I will later discuss how this specific program is being used as a model to serve all nine colleges in the district in partnership with the Sustainable Environment Institute. We have a climate community of practice that uh, Professor Holly Bailey Hoffman is going to be talking a little bit more about. And then we have these gateway programs. So these are informal education uh, initiatives such as seminars, workshops, field trips, public lectures that we use to supplement and again, to uh, uh, help guide new participants and show them the pathways into the credit side. So this is just one um, attempt to show you the variety of things we're offering. We're working with uh, construction. I was excited to hear about uh, trustee Hoffman's involvement in that field. I have a lot of questions because we are working on a new coalition on that. Uh, we're investing on climate communication and marketing, uh, gardening, uh, urban agroecology. Um, and so we have a, a media library that was put together by one of our students and I invite you all to visit and learn more. So with that, I would like to invite to the podium, Dr. Holly Bailey Hoffman. She is a professor of English at West LA College. She's also our community of practice coordinator. And she is one of the state chancellor's climate fellow. So, uh, Dr. Holly, Bailey Hoffman, please.
Good afternoon. In her vision twenty thirty, Chancellor Christian identified climate action as a priority for our community college system. And she selected five climate fellows from the hundred and sixteen uh, colleges to work on the areas of campus facilities, curriculum, student engagement, community engagement, and workforce development to research and make recommendations for what we can do as a system. So uh, next, next slide. Oh, it's, okay. Well, this is the community of practice also that we have at West, um, that we're leading, a slight aside, to allow LACC D faculty, staff and students to process feelings about climate change, climate action. Um, just to create a space for folks. You see a picture here of an event we had that allowed folks to process our feelings around the January wildfire events. Uh, but here's the slide about the chancellor's vision. There are five climate fellows. Um, I'm pictured up there and my task as the climate fellow for curriculum is to research and spotlight innovation in curriculum in colleges throughout the hundred and sixteen, right? So we're looking particularly, we know that we have science-related degrees like climate study, climate studies, environmental studies degrees. But what I'm looking for are classes that have integrated some aspect of climate or sustainability into their own subject area. So for example, a climate grief unit in a health class or in a kinesiology class, something like that. So I'm doing a, a landscape analysis that provides benchmark data for the state. Um, I'll just say that I've worked in the LACC D since two thousand and two. I've served in many positions, um, many different leadership positions at the college and on different uh, committees at my college and here in the district. And I'll just say it is such an honor to represent our LACC D tribe up at the state chancellor's office. So thank you.
All right. So now workforce development. And I'm going to showcase two flagship programs that we have that we're very proud of. Uh, one is our twelve-week-long summer program called Every Career is a Climate Career. Our commitment to the students is you don't have to sacrifice your passions, your interests to do something about the climate crisis. There are ways for you to get engaged in this cause professionally by still honoring your vocation. And so last year, we placed thirty students in the pilot that we conducted. And this year, we're preparing to place one hundred students in um, over eighty host sites. These are CBOs, small businesses and government offices as well. Uh, we pay our students. This is funded by Department of Labor funding that, and we are now in the process of procuring new uh, funding for this to continue offering. And the vision is to see this evolve into a pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs. Um, the other program I want to highlight is our fellowship program. This one is paid completely by our partners, the California Youth Leadership Corps. And it's an investment of almost five hundred thousand dollars a year in our college only. They offer similar programs, not with climate focus, but similar programs in other colleges. And we have been trying to also facilitate the uh, these opportunities to make sure that other colleges know about it and can take advantage of it. Uh, so with that, I would like to invite a student that has participated in a summer program last year and who is now completing the fellowship program. He is a rising scholar. He's also a student worker at our office and is someone that is just an incredible individual. Such a great uh, person to have in our team. So Herbert Jimenez, if you could please come and.
Hello, everyone, and uh, good afternoon. Um, my name is Herbert Jimenez. I'm a rising scholar, student at West LA College and also.
Can you move the mic up a little?
Oh, oops.
Or towards you.
Right. Okay. And I'm also a student ambassador for the California Center for Climate Education. Uh, it's a first-of-its-kind program that directly serves all nine colleges and supports um, climate education in all one hundred and sixteen colleges across California. Uh, a little background about me, I'm a first-generation Mexican-American. So for me, uh, college was not an option. Um, I decided to join the military and hopes to fund my education. And unfortunately, uh, life took a different turn. I spent three years in fire camp. And during that time, I was directly affected by climate change. Uh, I got to see firsthand the devastation that it can cause. Um, thanks to my training, I was able to excel in fire camp and I was able to lead and train uh, my fellow firefighters in, for about three years. Um, shortly after that, I decided to go into roofing because uh, I had a dream to be an author. But when I brought that dream up to a few of my friends, they all kind of laughed and were surprised. So I just assumed that that wasn't going to be something that I would be able to attain. Uh, I decided to do roofing and then I also had to feel the effects of climate change while I was roofing for uh, local thirty-six for about four or five years. Um, there were certain days that it would be too hot to go to work. So I couldn't even go to work sometimes because of the weather. Um, afterwards, a pandemic happened and that's when I started reflecting on my dream to become an author. And I confided this time in my family, which supported me and gave me the courage to finally do something that I didn't have the courage to do. Um, I became a father and then after I lost mine, I decided to go to West LA College. And that's when I went to a financial aid workshop and I met Dr. Taveras and told me about the summer internship, the pilot program that she was speaking about briefly, and I was able to attend it. Uh, I didn't have any education or uh, prior knowledge of climate change, other than my physical experience there. Uh, and so I felt like I was a perfect candidate for this position. And thankfully, I was able to be selected for this position and I was able to enter at Altisium, uh, the largest ocean hub in the country. Um, it's an ocean tech hub for the country. Uh, at this location, I was able to uh, understand different um, technologies with the blue economy and um, sustainable aquaculture. And I also joined the climate center shortly after the summer internship was over and became a student ambassador. Now I'm a climate action fellow um, with the fellowship there at the climate center. And uh, through that fellowship, I'm able to work with another organization called Grades of Green that educates and empowers uh, kindergarten through twelfth-grade students to take action on climate issues. Um, I was also able to attend the Holly Mitchell um, Board of Trust, or, sorry, um, Board of Supervisors uh, mock meeting. And I was able to speak there, uh, not too far from where I'm standing right now. Um, being the first for all these programs means that someone opened the door for me. Um, I couldn't have done that had I not entered at West LA College. Um, my experience there has given me more confidence in my dream and it's actually made it more of a goal than it was a dream. Um, I now have even bigger goals to attend USC one day and possibly do more than just fiction writing. Um. If, if someone or some people didn't take the initiative or have the guts to take the risk of being first, we'd never make any progress on this planet. This reminded me of a poem that uh, Robert Frost wrote called The Road Not Taken. And just like how our choices make or guide our past, I don't, um, I don't consider myself a poet, but my professor and my creative writing class challenged me to do something that I never thought I could do. This is what I wrote. Behind bars of fire, the bus staggered on a small path towards the forest fire. And for some, that was their line. Knowing the dangers of our task, we questioned the extra freedoms we were about to face. No amount of training will prepare you for the devastation a wildfire will blow at you as you step foot out that damn glorified ambulance we call a bus. Very quickly, we felt the heat on our faces as we placed our shrouds under our helmets. Nope, not for me, said one of the inmate firefighters. Take me back behind the wall. I ain't signed up for this shit. He dropped his gear and walked back to the bus. Everyone else marched towards the bars of fire. Thank you and go west, go far.
That's why we do the work we do. Um, I don't have a lot of time left, but I want to invite you all to join us in our many community outreach events. In the past two years, we have hosted and co-hosted over fifty public events. We have served directly over twenty-five hundred people. Uh, recently, we had uh, the planting of a micro forest. And I know that some of the board trustees were there. Thank you so much for being there. Um, this is an opportunity, like many that we create, for families to come to campus, for the students, for the faculty, for the community at large, to really. to really invest in that beloved community concept that we've discussed earlier today. I want to invite, we've had other events. I'm not going to have time to go over all of them. But we've been in the news a lot, which I hope, you know, is an opportunity to raise not only the profile of West LA College and the Climate Center, but the whole district. We are here to serve the whole district. I invite you all to save the date for our next Climate Palooza. We have them every year. It's part of our mandate. So, we've had two of them, and then we're going to have the next one this October. And I don't have time to go over this diagram, but you have that in your handouts, and I'm happy to explain. Clearly, our goal is to place students in good-paying jobs. Clearly, our goal is to take advantage of all these opportunities that despite what we're hearing at the federal level will continue to come because climate change does not care about what's happening in the political world. And so, we're going to continue having the need to adapt to a new reality. And so, these jobs will continue to exist and be created. We have now millions of dollars being injected by the state into this region through something called California Jobs First that is specifically for green jobs. And we are part of many coalitions applying for these ones. We serve the district. I mentioned earlier, we have this amazing program in collaboration with Sustainable Environment Institute. It's an organization with faculty members from all nine colleges in the district. And we've invested from our Climate Center funding $250,000 to develop this demonstration project that we hope be then adapted to all 116 colleges. We're part of regional coalitions like the B cap program. And we're super excited about this new coalition on green construction. This is just taking off so fast, and there's a lot of funding for us to rebuild LA. So, to conclude, I want to just, you know, tell you what we're available to talk about, all the things that we're working on, anytime, any day, just contact us. And I'll finish with a call to action, which is asking you for your support in codifying the Climate Center. So, this is something that despite, you know, money involved, we just need the opportunity to exist and to be in this space in a way that we can show continuity so that we can continue applying for these funding opportunities. We are involved in many new regional coalitions, and that will allow us to better serve the district, the students, the colleges, and our communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Let me again thank West LA College President Limbaugh, our wonderful faculty, the colleagues working with the state chancellors, and of course, the student testimonial. Herbert Jimenez, thank you so much for being with us. We appreciate you and know that through our legislative efforts. And thank you to trustee Vella. We are looking at codifying that particular piece into the legislation to provide future funding. So, we got you. We're working on it. But again, thank you, West LA team. Can we give another round of applause, please? Thank you for being with us this afternoon. We appreciate you.
President Ino and chancellor, I definitely want to, you know, continue to lend support to codifying the Climate Center. I think that that needs to happen. So, I lend my full support to that. I do want to ask that, you know, if President Limbaugh or anyone from the climate change center can attend the Workforce Development Ad Hoc Committee, which is next-- it's next Thursday, April 10, 2:30 PM. It's on Zoom. And, yeah, Dr. Lancaster has the information, Dr. Limbaugh. Let me just say that we were just looking at childcare, and we found that pipeline with workforce development. Now, we're seeing such a strong correlation with workforce and the environment. And I have to say that it really does lend itself to be any type of job. And I think that's probably the point of people, what people are saying, is that you can actually, you know, be in, you know, all sorts of jobs and still have the ability to be, you know, respectful of the environment and at the same time have that career. And so, I challenge people who kind of see it one way. Let's also see it on a way that we could actually get our students into some good-paying jobs in sustainability with labor backing as we move forward. So, and trustees, I will, you know, keep you all posted on the codification so that when we have that ability to support it in Sacramento, you guys can lend our support. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. And, yeah, we'll have West LA-- we're thinking along the same lines of having them at the Workforce Development Meeting next week. We'll send you the information. If you could be there, that'd be great, President.
If they could attend this time and then maybe report in a future--
A presentation and a future meeting. Sounds good. Okay, Madam President, that concludes my report today. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
One more question, a report from the chancellor. It has to do with the enrollment.
Yes.
So, do we anticipate any more, you know, enrollment from bots that could, you know, kind of skew these numbers?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure, because--
There's a simple answer, and that is we might continue to see minimal impact on bots. I don't think we could ever eradicate bots because they continue to find ways to infiltrate the system. But I could tell you, the work of Deputy Chancellor Alba Lopez or team, the colleges, has really reduced the number of bots that are coming in right from prior years. So, the change you saw from last year to this year was primarily the eradication of bots. Deputy Chancellor Alba Lopez, anything you want to add to that? I mean, I can't tell you specifically no bots in the future, but I could tell you, we have reduced the number of bots coming in in a very significant way through all of the various measures that Deputy Chancellor Alba Lopez would speak a little bit about.
So, this last year, we invested in some infrastructure with a partnership to have a third-party assist us with identifying trends and patterns and verifying that students are in fact who they state they are. We also updated one of our policies that requires students to authenticate with us either in person or via an online format. So, with all of that said, we'll continue to monitor. As the chancellor stated, the bots continue to find their way in, but I think we've got a pretty strong system in place to monitor and keep them at bay.
Okay, and is there a cutoff time to where bots are affecting? In other words, is it right before the beginning of the course or--
So, our current efforts are to keep them from coming into our system at all. But for those that do make it in, the faculty are our first line of defense. If they notice a student in an online course is not participating, we ask that they drop them and notify us that we can look into them further. We have additional reviews each week of enrollment trends, and then we ask that folks send us anything that looks suspicious for us to take a look at. So, it's both ongoing, and we're trying to stop them from even coming in the door.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board? No, thank you, chancellor. So, next, I'm looking at item J, combined consent calendar. These matters require a majority vote. We have now to review calendar items K1 through W12. These items include consent calendar for human resources, academic affairs, student services, budget and finance, business and facilities. May I have a motion and a second to adopt the combined consent calendar for items K1 through W12? Moved by Vella, second by Hernandez. Any discussion items or any items that require additional information? Hearing none. May I have a roll call, please, Lupe?
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras? Thank you.
Next. Is item X1 through X9? May I have a motion and a second to adopt business items X1 through X9?
Moved.
President, you know, every few questions or comments on a couple of items can--
Sure, should we move and second and then open it?
I'm okay with approving it, but I just wanted to, for the sake of the record--
Sure. So, they're just for additional information? Okay, so we'll move. We have a motion by trustee Buena. Do you second? Okay, second by trustee Veras. So, please, which item, information, items require additional information?
First, if I can request from the chancellor, we have one of our student health agreements that are coming forward. Would it be possible to get a memo to the board on the status of all of our student health agreements? Want to-- it's hard to assess if we're delivering similar service across the board with the various vendors that are there. And so, it just, we tend to approve them one by one as they come, or at least one provider does a few campuses. But I'd love to get a sense as to what we're doing and what's-- because some of this is obviously cost out of us, and it also has some student fees in it as well.
Yeah, we're happy to provide that report and a wide-way communication memo to the board in the next week or so, trustee Veras.
Great, sounds good. The other question I had was on X3. And just, I guess this is the first time I'm seeing a foundation acting as a 3%. I guess it's a fee. Is that a fee? Just curious, why are we taking this route here? And do we do this in any other place, or this is a special circumstance with here? And I think the desire ultimately, when we raised issues with foundations and applications for grants, was to ensure coordination and making sure that we're not sort of stepping on ourselves and then having, you know, the appropriate kind of accounting background. But I'm just curious as to what this is, and it's just a little bit out of the norm of what I've been used to seeing over the years.
Let me take a quick stab, and I'm going to ask President Gabriel to come forward. This is a little bit of a unique situation, President, or rather trustee Veras. The, this is an opportunity for us to seek some funding through HUD on a particular facility related to Rattick at City College. There are some capacity issues currently in terms of being able to apply directly through our, I guess I would say, team at City College. The foundation stepped up and is willing to submit the application on behalf of the college. Let me be clear, though, that the grant will be coming to the district and to the college directly, that all of the matters related to the renovation of the facility will be done by the district, and everything else, any other activities associated with the grant will be done by the district and the college. This is a way for us to ensure that we met the deadline and to get the grant in. But the foundation's sole purpose in this particular case is to help us apply for the grant. It is unique, not really the way, the route we would want to move forward. But it was one of those exciting circumstances where we wanted to get the grant in to ensure that we didn't miss the deadline. We heard from the Congresswoman, which we submitted the grant, that there's a likelihood that we will be funded, and we didn't want to miss out on the opportunity. President Gabriel, anything else you'd like to add?
And President, if I can state this, I didn't necessarily raise it as a negative thing.
Yeah.
I raise it as it's a very different practice we've had. Usually, we've seen in the past independent grant writing--
Yes.
--or firms or stuff like that. But if there's potentially something interesting here with this relationship, then certainly worth exploring, but I wanted to approach it from that perspective.
Yeah, City does have the capacity through their foundation to write grants, and they've been very successful. So, that's why I think it's unique to City. I don't know, we have the capacity with other foundations, but certainly City has had that opportunity. So, I don't know if you want to add more?
Yeah, you've covered it for the most part. Our foundation has a strong team, and on our campus, we don't have the capacity in terms of grant writing to do so. The foundation is one of the largest foundations in the state of California, and they have a strong team of grant writers to be able to generate revenue for the foundation, but also for a lot of the programming on the college. Our foundation, in this case, works very closely with our Rattick program in supporting them through scholarships and programming and partnerships. So, in this case, this was a last-minute opportunity, as the chancellor mentioned, and they were able to get this done very quickly. But also thanks to the chancellor and his team from fiscal, from his district attorney there, able to step in to make sure that we were in alignment to be able to do this. And they would only write the grant and hand everything over to the college and the district moving forward.
Who's administering and overseeing?
The college and the district is ministering everything. They are only doing the front end of this process, which is just writing the grant because we didn't have the capacity or the time to be able to get it in time.
The fiscal will be done by our team and the facility build. And of course, B.C. Sarr's team will be handling the renovations and other buildings.
Yeah, we had all the stakeholders involved when this opportunity came forward. So, we met with everyone from the district staff to our college to make sure that we were in alignment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other items that would require additional information? Nope, okay. Let's see. May I have a roll call, please, Lupe?
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote? Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Great, moving on to item Y1 through Y6 facility items. May I have a motion and a second to adopt the facility item 1 through Y1 through Y6?
So moved.
So moved by Hernandez.
Second.
Second by trustee Veras. Are there any items that would require additional information from the board? Nope. May I have a roll call, please, Lupe?
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Item Z, recommendations from the chancellor.
Thank you, President. Ino, we have a couple of items here. The first one is simply a change signature authority. We do require this item to come before the board. For, actually going back to Marvin Martinez. So, it's long overdue, and we have currently interim president Perez, who needs that authority officially from the board. So, this is an item that's coming forward. In addition, item 2 and 3, we have Board Policy 2015 and 2725. These are regarding the compensation and some changes to the student trustee of board policy. It's long overdue, so we have those before you today for consideration. And then lastly, the Board Policy 6300 fiscal management. There's some minor technical primarily changes there. You saw it in first reading last month, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sure, I'll go through them one at a time. So, the first one is the change signature authority on the Bank of America Certificate of Deposit Accounts Held by ELAC. Can I get a motion and a second? Moved by Hernandez, second by Hoffman. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Lupe?
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Great, item Z2, can I have a motion and a second on the item? Trustee Hernandez moved. I can second. Ino? Any discussion regarding this one? Roll call, please, Lupe?
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Great. Item Z3, Board Policy 2725, Board Member Compensation, second reading. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
So moved by Hernandez, second by Vella. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Lupe?
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Great. Item Z4, Board Policy 6300, Fiscal Management, second reading. May I have a motion and a second on item Z4? So moved by Hernandez. Second, second by Hoffman. Any discussion, board colleagues? No. Our roll call, please, Lupe?
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Item AA Matters requiring a supermajority of vote. The next item will require five affirmative votes. This is to adopt a resolution of intent to convey a utility easement to Spectrum Pacific West LLC. Can I get a motion and a second? Moved by Hernandez, second by trustee Buena. Any discussion, colleagues? No. Lupe, can I get a roll call, please?
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Vella?
Yeah.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Item BB notice reports and informatives for members, there are two notices, no action is required at this time. Okay, so we're just moving through. Item CC. Uh, announcements, announcements and indications of future proposed actions by members of the Board of Trustees. Would any of my colleagues like to make an announcement or indicate future proposed action? Uh, trustee Vettis?
Hey, uh, thank you, President, you know, um. I'd like to request that we adjourn our meeting today in memory of Father Richard Estrada. You know, he, for those that didn't know him. He was a longtime um. Uh clergy man activist, um, first as a Roman Catholic priest and then as a discipalian priest, but. Most people think of him as a people's priest. But uh, as connected to the district here, he was the founder of Home and Design. And uh, service provider uh to us that has housed some. In emergency circumstances, homeless students for us and they worked with us for years. So he. Was a founder and visionary in that space and was always a. Person of great faith um that guided and directed uh Los Angeles. To protect immigrants and working class people throughout. So uh, if we can adjourn his memory. Much appreciated.
We definitely can.
Yeah, I appreciate um trustee Vettis bringing that up. Um, I do want to remind everyone that the, again, the uh workforce development first ever ad hoc committee will be on April ten. Over Zoom. Um, if we could please post that on our, on our website, please, or social media. And then the, the LGBT affairs committee will be. On April twenty second, um, and that's at two P M also on Zoom. And uh, we will be taking up. You know, some of the, you know, possible. Uh incidents that have occurred throughout the community as well as the federal impact. So it's gonna be a, a good meeting. Thank you. Yeah.
Please.
Yeah, I just want to mention that uh trustee Baham and I were invited to speak at the SS CCC, the Student. Senate of California Community Colleges General Assembly this weekend. I think our panel is Friday afternoon. Yeah. Friday afternoon, um, we don't have to travel, it's right by LAX. Um, but we were, we're honored to be able to be on a panel together. So, thank you.
Great, will it be available via Zoom?
Pardon me?
Can we watch it via Zoom?
I think it's just live. I think it's, yeah. We can have so recorded though. Yeah. I don't know, maybe they, maybe not.
Board colleagues to the right, trustee Baham, do you have any announcements?
No.
Trustee Bueno, trustee Henderson, no. Okay, great, um, I don't have any other announcements. Um, so now we will do DD public comments. Um, again, the First Amendment and Brown Act guarantee a member of the public the right to criticize a public employee or public official in performance of their duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their comments on issues. Relevant to the conduct of the public's business rather than on private or unrelated matters. Speakers are reminded that Brown Act and First Amendment do not protect defamatory statements made, um, which may subject a speaker to personal liability. Are there any members of the public signed up to address the board of on matters not on the agenda? And I do have a couple lists. So first, um, via Zoom is Roxana Sanchez from.
She is not on Zoom.
Not on Zoom. Is, are they, are you here? Roxana Sanchez? No, okay, um, we'll move on to Kyle Patterson. Please. You'll have three minutes. I have Kyle Patterson, Richard Burns and Salvador George, George on. The, the three of you on the item.
Yes, um. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Trustees, board members, uh, community college district folks. Uh, my name is Kyle Patterson. And um, you know what, I'm alumni as well.
Yay.
Trade tech, L A T T C, so. One class a semester, baby. Yeah, so I'm here today to talk about tax fraud and how it negatively impacts our community at large and our. Count, or, or school districts. It's very important annually. On a national level. Over three hu, three billion dollars plus is lost in our um, uh, from our uh. Communities due to tax fraud on a national level. With the new change in administration, with the government on a national level, I could only imagine. The uh possible uh budget shortfalls that community college districts. Might impact, uh, I might negative impact you all. And I look at this, all the stuff that was talked about today. With trying to find job opportunities. How community colleges are getting promoted and you guys are fighting so hard to make sure that there's an opportunity for local, uh, local communities. All throughout the nine campuses throughout L A County. And so when I think about tax fraud and the tax, tax revenue is critical. Especially to marginalized communities. When it comes to instructions, services. The uh, teachers, more teachers. And construction. Very important that we make sure that we bring, uh, stand up and speak out against tax fraud. And how it undermines our community when folks are, when you have bad actors out there not paying their share. I remember, uh, I was going to a trade tech probably a, a few semesters back. And there was a situation that came up with drinking fountains and how they're so outdated. The, the, the students got, uh, gathered up and for this labor study class that I was taking, we had to figure out a campaign. What's the word to get the message out to, uh, to bring awareness to. Get more services and updated drinking fountains. And it's issues like, it's things like tax fraud and uh how those wages, uh, those lost revenues can help. With services like that. So tax fraud in the construction industry, it drains from public funds. And this, and uh. We want to make sure that we stand up and speak out against tax fraud. The future belongs to those who build it. And it will be built without tax fraud. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, n- next is Richard Burns. And then Salvador George.
Yes, good afternoon. Hear a lot of good stuff. Appreciate everything you're doing, making the hard decisions. My name is Richard Burns. I'm a representative of Western States Regional Council of Carpenters. The average age of the school buildings in the U S is forty nine years old. Every dollar stolen through construction tax fraud is a dollar not going into our schools. The billions lost befunding new schools. Modernization facilities and providing the resources our students and our teachers deserve. This April twelfth to eighteenth. Western States Regional Council of Carpenters is standing up against tax fraud construction. As a part of the tax fraud days of action, too many contractors misclassify workers. Paying off the books and cheating taxpayers, taking money away from education. Let's build a future where every tax dollar supports students, teachers and the schools. It's time to crack down on tax fraud, investments on our projects and support the next generation. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the hard decisions you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name's Salvador George and I'm a proud member of the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters. First, I want to thank you all for the important work that you do for our schools and our community. From April twelfth to the eighteenth, Carpenter's Local Three Two Three is joining the workers across country to stand up against construction industry tax fraud. As a part of the tax fraud days of action. Too many contractors are misclassifying workers, paying them off the books and cheating taxpayers. That means less money for education, for students. And the public services we all rely on. I have over fifteen years of experience in the field. And I serve as a union representative. As a representative, we visit construction job sites all over the Los Angeles area. What I see every day should concern everyone who cares about justice and fairness. Tax fraud is widespread. Contractors pay workers in cash to avoid taxes. That's not just stealing from the workers, it's stealing from all of us. Every dollar hitting in the underground economy is a dollar that doesn't reach our, our classrooms or support our schools. It's even worse when it comes, when it happens in publicly funded projects. Projects meant to uplift our communities. Instead, we see workers being exploited in silence. Many of these workers are immigrants, some undocumented. And now instead of paying them fairly, some contractors use a fear to keep them quiet. Workers are threatened with ICE and deportation. Just for asking to be paid. Along with our other representatives, we meet workers living in half completed job sites. Cooking on camp stoves. And relying on food donations just to survive. I'm a first generation Mexican American. Both of my parents came here illegally in the search for a better life. They worked very hard to provide for our family. Thanks, thanks to the opportunities in this country, they both became citizens. I assure that because in my, if my parents were being exploited like I see these construction workers being exploited. I wish someone would have stepped up, spoke up and made a difference for them. We are asking you to stand with these workers, hold us honest contractors accountable. Protect the people building our schools. Support the strong labor standards and put an end to tax fraud in our city. Thank you again for the good work you all do. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next on Zoom, I have Alberto Galván. I don't, is there, are they? Okay, we can go back to Roxana Sanchez. Hello? You have three minutes.
Are you Roxana? You can speak now. Roxana Sanchez?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I'm so, so sorry about that. Um, well, this is Roxana Sanchez, full-time counselor at Los Angeles Southwest College. I am a D S P S counselor and one of the things that I help students with is to advocate for themselves. And so today I'm advocating for myself and a few other colleagues. I'm one of three counselors that have been put. On a forced leave with a fake administrative evaluation. I have not met with anyone in H R nor have they met with me to let me know what is going on with this administrative evaluation. Why I had to be put on a forced leave. And the administrator that put me on a forced leave also. Made it so that I had to submit to a fit for duty in order to come back. I have seen no evidence. My other colleague has been on forced le, uh, leave for eleven months. She was told to stand down and not renew the grant for the student services program that she works for. We are one of fourteen counselors that filed a grievance against this administrator over a year ago and yet. She's still violating uh our contract. But I want to tell you what's even really bad. It's humiliating is to be taken away from your job for no reason. You can't contact your students or your colleagues. And no one at H R, both at L A Southwest or the district will tell you why you were put on involuntary forced leave. With an administrative evaluation. So I'm saying all this because I know you know who I am. I don't want to make anyone embarrassed, but you know what? It's humiliating. I took this job to help students. I took this job because I am an advocate for students with disabilities. And what I am going through and some of my other colleagues at Los Angeles Southwest College is ridiculous. And so maybe you won't do anything after today, but you know what? I put it on tape. So the world can see that I am asking and demanding and I deserve to work in a place. That is not full of retaliation, harassment and discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, then the last person is Alberto Galván. Oh, good.
On Zoom, let's check to see if it's him. Okay. Hello?
Yes, can you hear me?
Who's this, please?
Yes, my name is Lenny Lauren. I'm the administrative assistant to Alberto Galván.
Oh.
Um, he is unavailable, but has prepared a letter and has asked me to, to read it out loud to you.
Yes, that's, yes, that's fine. Go ahead.
Thank you so much.
Minutes, you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. On behalf of Manos Que Sobreviven. Congratulations on your election and thank you for your commitment to serve the L A Community College District. M Q S would like to take this opportunity to introduce you to our purpose and mission. M Q S is committed to providing needed health assistance, mobility access and food resources to food insecure families. Low income and elderly residents in East Hollywood and Northeast Los Angeles. Now more than ever with. Inflation remaining a problem for Angelenos, especially the cost of food. M Q S continues to support families and uplift individuals who need vital assistance for growth, sustainability and healthy choices. As a survivor of food insecurity, hunger and a lack of available resources. And assistance as a child, I can identify with the hopes and dreams of children and young adults everywhere who feel scared, lonely and hungry. That is where Manos Que Sobreviven, or Hands That Survive, has played an important role in the hopes and dreams of families. By providing food, one bag at a time, through our weekly food distribution in East Hollywood and Northeast Los Angeles. At a time when economies are unstable and our politically changed charged environment continues to breed instability and unwarranted chaos. We ask that the L A C C D Board of Trustees work with us to create a Northeast L A food distribution hub. At L A C C D's Vandy Camp Innovation Center located in Northeast L A. Needy families, individuals and elderly residents now more than ever need your help. To continue our mission to support the communities we serve, one bag at a time. Thank you for listening on behalf of M Q S.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have one more. Um, okay, so um, no other public comments on matters not on the agenda, so we'll look at item D D now. Closed session items and. We do have one person to speak, Alvaro Ortega. You'll have three minutes.
Uh, hi.
Hi.
Uh, my name is Alvaro Ortega. I'm here on behalf of the disciplinary action that's gonna take. Uh, I just wanted to speak and see if I can get any type of modification. Uh, I do want to know to uh what is being uh. Said uh about the absence. Uh, but all I want to know is if I can like get some type of uh. Modification due to the first time of me being here. So. That's pretty much all I could. It's pretty much all I want to say.
Okay, thank you. You, you have, if you, yeah, I did it for a good time to you.
I'm here in support of, of Mr. Uh, Ortega. So I'm, I'm not sure if we missed it. I stepped out to the restroom, but I was trying not to miss it. He's on the. Thing to speak to, ready for the, yeah, so anyway, I'm in support of him, um. Because, and my name is Ibrahimabel, I'm at the ELAC campus. I'm also a steward as well. So um, and I try to support, you know, our members especially and employees. When they are, you know, like this, this first offense and the first uh, his first offense is asking for like seven days and you know this. So his situation is very complicated because he's had a wife that had um, a kid and he's like never so, he's been talking to me, so I know his stories of. Back to back. He was working with uh his supervisors or he was trying to work with them to figure things out. So apparently while they were helping him, apparently he wasn't getting the proper guidance or whatever. So stuff went by, he was getting written up, things was going on, he didn't know what to do. He's never dealt with the union. He's never dealt with a steward, he's, you know what I'm saying? So he's a first timer for anything. And so I'm here to try to guide him at the same time, but as I guide him, I'm here in his support to ask you that. Um, can you, with his attendance and all this stuff, is there any way that we could um. Not be so harsh on him, ask to give him seven days and a you notice or maybe he should get another write-up or. Or, or something. He's owning it. He's just kind of confused as to how he got here. So I'm in, you know, here to support him and that, and I'm asking you guys to consider that in your decision. In your closed session when you decide to, you know, issue, issue him any type of uh warning or disciplinary action. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Um, so now we will move on to item E E recess to closed session. The board will now recess to closed session in accordance with the Ralph Brown and Brown Act Government Code Sections five four nine five zero. Uh, and Ed Code to discuss matters on the posted closed session agenda pursuant of government code section five four nine five four point five. Are there any objections? Hearing none, we will now um adjourn the meeting, we will now recess to um closed session. And then we will also um honor Father Richard Estrada as we go into closed session.